Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, the meeting is called order. We will have our room call.
Dr. Robinson here, Mr. West.
Here.
Dr. Bunge here, Ms. Ware.
Here.
Here, we're all present. Now what we have, we will go to two point one, square in the end of new board memo. With the turn.
We're about to do the next of the school district board of trustees of the office. I think you can raise your right hand. Repeat after me.
Aye.
Doctor, I am on my number now, Ware. Who's on, who's Ware? Who's on, who's Ware? That I will faithfully, that I will faithfully perform the constitution of the United States, and the United States, and the constitution of the state of Mississippi. And the constitution of the state of Mississippi. And obey the laws thereof. And obey the laws thereof. That I am not disqualified. That I am not disqualified. From holding the office of trustee. From holding the office of trustee. Of the Natchez Adams School District. Of the Natchez Adams School District. That I will faithfully discharge. That I will faithfully discharge. The duty of the office on which I am about to enter. The duty of the office on which the office on which I'm about to enter. So help me God. So help me God. Thank you.
How would? Part of that, I think that I would ask is that new trustees required to make a salary election, see your $2,000 a year total for sixty-seven dollars a week. And once you make an election, you go to the minutes, you can't get a check. And so if you could make your election for forward, you have compensation for your party. Do you have a question?
Thank you. Danny Williams.
Do we have to take action on that?
No, sir. It's ours. Okay, so, welcome aboard, Ms. Ware. Anything you would like to say?
I just want to thank everyone for giving me the opportunity to represent our students, the faculty, instructors, and administration here at the Natchez Adams School District. And I will do this in my ability. Thank you.
And I would say, welcome aboard, and I see, you know, we have backed out, but I take, there's a hood, you know, mother, Ms. Greenair, who taught me a long time ago. But, and also I say, with all the money that you're getting now, you can take them out and use twice a week. That's not all you're gonna pay to do that, $200. Okay?
Thank you.
If not, it's, anything on the gentleman, gentleman that need to be taken off.
Yeah, Mrs. James, a member of the board, you can take off eight point seven feet.
Okay. All right. Eight one seven. And also, okay, if that's.
Ms. McDonald, is there some NAACP request we keep so, McDonald, outside, that we got at the meeting, a couple meetings ago, do you have that?
I think I have it.
Okay. But you could get it, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, there's a request for usage of the school property from the NAACP as far as June, I believe.
June 10th?
Ms. McDonald has a copy of it. Well, we can deal with that when we get down to board comments if we want to, we don't have to play.
Let's do it. Let's do it anyway?
Yeah, we'll just do it that way.
Okay.
The board's comments.
All right. All right, then, if there are no other changes, can we have adoption of the gentleman?
I move for adoption of the gentleman.
Seven.
Motion was made by Dr. Robinson, second by Dr. Bunge. Any discussion? If none, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
It passes five zero. Okay? Public comments, are there any public comments? None? Okay, item number five, recognition in presentation. Five point one, um, Mr. Butcher.
Good afternoon. We want to thank all of you for attending the meeting today, and we want to also, once again, Professor Swire to become a member of the Board of Trustees. It is mine a privilege and pleasure to behalf of the board to also pay recognition to a person I've worked with for a very, very long time, not only with this school board, but also down through the years, I've had an opportunity to work with her also in Louisiana. And I've learned that she's very dedicated to the task. She's very knowledgeable about education, and she often refers to a board meeting about the way it used to be old school. I tell her, you know, on the sidebar, I always tell her, you know, our children say, you know, we're antique and nothing is the way it used to be. Ain't no doubt about that. So at this time, we'd like Ms. McDonald to assist to make a presentation.
To be a member of the Board of Trustees requires dedication, requires focus, requires stick skin. It requires a love for what you do, a love for your community, and a love for the children that we serve, because at the end of the day, it is about our children. And we can say without a doubt that Mrs. Newsome has embodied all of those characteristics, as Mr. Butcher says, as an educator, as a principal, and as a board member, she has remained focused on the task. We know that the responsibility, the role, the seat, has not always been an easy one. No one can say all decisions were perfect, and all of us are perfect. However, we can say without a shadow of a doubt that Ms. Newsome has remained focused on ensuring that the Board of Trustees for the Natchez Adams School District, as her role as a member, has ensured that we have kept at the heart of every decision, her dedication to the children of Natchez Adams School District. And so we would like to recognize Mrs. Newsome for her role, and for her dedication, and for her service to our community. So please join me as I read this. Natchez Adams School District Board of Trustees, thank you for your dedication to our board. You've been a valued member of our board, and we wish you the very best. Your experience, knowledge, dedication, and presence will surely be missed. We are extremely grateful for the role you have played throughout the years. You have seen, you have been, you have set an example to be followed in the future and cherished by those of us that were fortunate enough to have experienced for ourselves. Thank you for your dedicated service. You have made a difference, October 2007 to February 2022.
Let me just say good evening to everyone. And I certainly would like to thank the superintendent, the deputy superintendent, the board members of Natchez Adams School District, and all of those who go up to make, who go to make up this organization. I'm not one who likes to be in the limelight, and this is kind of difficult for me today because of the fact that all I know is Natchez Adams School District. I started my career teaching fourth grade at Northside in Frazier, and I've been a part of Natchez Adams School District most of my life. But I would just say today that this is the culminating activity or EBIT for me. I have enjoyed every moment of it. I thank the Board of Alderman and the mayors that were in place who put me there and allowed me to remain for fifteen years. And as I said the other week, I hope that in some small way, the things that I did contributed to the growth and the betterment of Natchez Adams School District. Thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Newsome. Five point two, Ms. James.
Good evening, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher, Mrs. McDonald-Green. The artwork that you see presented before you today was created by students from the Natchez Early College Art Club under the supervision of Ms. Morton Gruber. We simply told them to create artwork. They came up with the theme. So in light of Women's History Month, they wanted to pay homage to women of different races, different cultures, different backgrounds, and that is, this is their perspective of that. This picture that you see here that has all the different body parts and different colors, what they told me is that they wanted to embody or show that we're all different, but we're all the same as well. So that's what you see before us today. So while I'm up, I'll go ahead and do the recognition for the who's who. So Natchez Campus of Kapaiolinkin Community College selects students every year for who's who. This is the college side, not the high school side. So the students that I'm about to present to you are seniors who were selected by the faculty and staff based on their behavior, their character, their grades, their positive attitudes, citizenship, work ethic, respect towards others, maturity, et cetera. So when I call your name, if you're present, you can come forward. And we do have some students attending via Zoom as well. Kyla Baskin, Timothy Blaylock, Reese Blanton, Erica Burks, Chelsea Ellis, Isralee Franklin, Daisy Green, Caitlin Hayes, Jalen Hurst, Sanaya King, Bryce Knight, Tyra Knight, Donato Miller, Tamaz Minor, Edzeal Ortiz, Brandy Owen, Asia Pollard, Kalen Proby, Eric Smith, Samaria Spears, Trinity Tucker, Kiana Wilcox, Destiny Williams, Zeri Williams, Therese Wilson, Caleb Wright. And within this group, most of these students, if not all of them, are on track to receive their associate degree, and we also have some pioneers. We have some students who are participating in the H-BAG program for the first time, and Colleen just brought their practical nursing program back, and we have some of the students that we presented tonight participating in their program as well. Mr. Jackson, I will also recognize two of our students who have been selected to participate in the Southwest Electric Youth Leadership Program. So that program is a very competitive program. The students selected will, they already have attended the Youth Leadership Workshop in Jackson, Mississippi, which was March 2nd through 4th. They were able to study the finer aspects of leadership, watch state government in action, and hear presentations from government leaders, business leaders, and electric corporate professionals. These students will attend the Washington DC Youth Tour, June 19th through 24th, 2022. All expense paid. They will join more than eighteen hundred high school juniors from forty-seven states across the nation at the youth tour, where they will learn about cooperatives, rule, electrification, from national, from a national perspective. During this week-long trip, they'll be able to visit significant monuments and memorials, the White House, the Smithsonian Institution, and much more. They will also meet Mississippi's two senators and their respective representatives. So the representative from Natchez Early College is Mr. Lawrence Jones. Lawrence, can you come forward? Lawrence is a model student in Natchez Early College. He's a member of the Beta Club, National Honor Society, and he also serves as the junior class president. In addition, he's a part of Nat- Natchez Youth Lead- Natchez Youth Leadership.
Students elected to participate in this program must hold a B average in English, Science, Geography, and Math, have a solid school attendance record, participate in extracurricular activities sponsored by the school, be active in youth leadership, church, civic, and community activities, and exhibit outstanding citizenship and have the respect of fellow classmates. The students elected for Natchez High School is Mr. Adrian Marshall. Mr. Marshall is a member of the Natchez High School Powerlifting Team, National Honor Society, and Beta Club.
Five point five. Yes, sir. Mr. James, members of the board, Butcher, Ms. McDonald-Green, today, we'd like to recognize those students from Fallon, where it's in, who took the ACT work keys. Many of you are familiar with the ACT, which assesses whether or not you're ready for college, but the ACT work keys assess whether or not you're work-ready. Of course, we do have some students who are ready to go into the world of work when they finish high school. So we want to recognize those students who score silver and gold on the ACT work keys. First was Sedriana Douglas, go. Malik Harris. Valeria O'Leary. Montreal McLeigh. Sakaya Stewart. Victoria Williams. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Fallon herself, Ms. Mercedes Sewell. Thank you. Now we move to five point six, building update.
Mr. McDonald cannot be here, and I think we need to go to the staff. In fact, Mike, he's been off a week. But I just finished talking, Keith, will you stay, please? Keith is out of the on-site personnel. He's here about three days a week now, trying to get everything back on track. But for the most part, we just hope that all of you would pray us, pray for us that the weather stays good. So they did finish the roof on the cafeteria, that mid part of the building, day right east. They finished the roof on the gym sometime last week. They approached the stage in the gym setting. They will start on the 10th grade learning house, learning house, there was a little building just over there. You know, we got four little buildings. So they will start on the 10th grade learning house tomorrow. And according to my calculations, might not be very good. According to my calculations, the weather stays good, that's been through one roof every week, that's, is that close, Keith? If the weather stays good. And after that, the next thing will be the inside door frame is supposed to be shipped sometime within the next few days. And on from there, we'll be looking at the windows, and they'll do what they call dry the building out, that'll be all the windows are in, the doors are in, the roof is in. So from that point on, we shouldn't have, the weather shouldn't stop us a whole lot. Now let's talk, go to the, to the new middle school. To the new middle school, thanks to Mr. Jackson, we've been able to push that timeline, the possibility of the time that we might be able to get in that school because of the fact that the bathrooms, oh, by the guy that's off, and the guy that's off, there'll be a lot of extensive work there. So he's been able to work out his schedule, work around his teachers and all, so that they'll be able to really start on that section of the project perhaps on Monday. Most of the materials are on site for that particular project, and we hope that sometime in late summer, that we'll, that the middle school will be ready, whatever the case is, hope that, you know, we'll be able to make up some time somewhere along the line because of the fact that the part of the building right now that we're in, it looks very nice. And we want to thank each of you for entrusting that project to us. I would, having discussed it with Mr. James, I would really, for the next meeting, maybe we could meet out there at the, you know, at the remodel facility, and then we'll give everybody a chance just to see about the quality of the work, all the new student desk are in, and all those kind of things. We'll give you a further update on a intensive plan, what we call a transition plan later on, I mean, in the course. I use the visiting site about twice a day.
Okay, now we'll finish with five point six. We don't have any more presentations, we can, anybody that wants to stay, we are moving back over to the boardroom now. So wait, we recess until we get to the boardroom.
I'll, I'll offer motion, we recess for ten minutes.
Motion was made by Mr. West, a recess, second by Dr. Robinson, all in favor? Okay, we're recessing.
Okay, I'll offer motion, and we go back and say.
Mr. West, made a motion, there we go back, it's official. Second by Dr. Bunge, all in favor? Meeting's back in session. We will start with item number six, approve of minutes. Can I get approval?
If anyone, if no one has a objection on this, if we approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay. Approve of minutes, approval was motion by Dr. Bunge, second by Ms. Ware, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass. Five zero, and item number seven, approve or consent items, anything in consent items items that a board member would like to move to action items at this time. Okay? If not, then it's approval of the consent items.
I'll so move.
Move by Mr. West for the approval of consent items, second by Dr. Bunge, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, pass, five zero. Okay, approval of action items, eight point one.
I move for approval of a personnel report.
Dr. We don't. Ms. Bright first, you move. Did you miss her?
Yeah.
You hear me?
Yeah. Good afternoon. I present to you the personnel report, eight point one A, and the personnel vacancy list, eight point one A, it is recommendation of the superintendent, that the Natchez Adams Board of Trustees approved attached personnel changes and the documents submitted therein.
I move for approval of a personnel report.
Okay. Dr. Robinson, motion for the, move with a personnel report, second by Ms. Ware, all in favor? Okay. Okay, at this time.
At this time, also, that personnel report, we make the recommendation, Coach Moore made the recommendation for the, our new head football coach, so at this time, I'll give it over to Coach Moore.
Good evening, Mr. James, members of the board, Mr. Butcher administration, everyone in the room. Today I'm here to give my recommendation and panel's recommendation for the new head football coach at Natchez High School. This person has over twenty years of football coaching experience, fifteen years of experience on the varsity level, fifteen years of that experience as a coordinator, both on the offensive side and the offensive side of the football. This person's coached on multiple staffs, including me at Natchez High School. We believe that this person will take our program in the right direction, not only take in the right direction, be a leader for our young men in the community, and be an active role model in the community. And the person is Mr. Stephen Davis. Hey, Mr. Davis, can you please stand?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I'm going to give this district, this program, all of me. I'm going to try to bring a winner, try to bring kids with high character, try to bring discipline, and most importantly, to make everyone proud of us. So I thank you guys for the trust you have given to me. I'm just ready to work. I'm just ready to work. Thank you, Mr. Butcher, thank you, Coach Moore. So, in short, I'm just ready to work.
Why, before you, please, why don't you give us some basic background on who you are?
Stephen Davis, I'm from the class of ninety, the first class, to, to have graduated Natchez side. I'm a 1994 graduate of Louisiana Tech. I started coaching football in 2000 in Stone Mill, Georgia. I came back to Natchez in 2004 to coach with Coach Reed. I've had stops here, Franklin County, Delta Charter School, Williston County. I've been coaching track also since 1998. I'm a actual product of Natchez. I'm a member of BO- Uh, I'm a member of the Omega Psi Phi for, for, for eternity. Um, and I'm just a simple, humble, mighty person right now.
Thanks. So this was in the personnel report we've already approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Lee Butler, board.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here.
Eight point two, yeah, eight point two.
At eight point two, you have your package, you have in your package a new organization chart. Uh, due to the fact that we put the COVID position on, it just, it was necessary for us to change the organization chart.
What, what was the reason? Because of one way?
Because with the organization chart, you instructed us to put some new positions on. So those persons had to be able to report to somebody.
Okay.
You know, so as a result, we made a difference in the organization chart. Now, chances are, once the uh S R money runs out, the organization chart would have to be read back to, to where it used to be.
Okay. So I'll offer a motion that you approve the organizational chart as amended.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. West, second by Dr. Bunce. Any discussion on the organization chart, if not, all in favor? All right, pass is five zero. Next, eight point three, professional government standard, that's our, uh Miss Davis, you gonna get us a copy of that, right? Isn't that? Only David? Okay, we all have to sign that code. We'll sign it and get it back over there, we turn it into a state.
Let me ask this question, is something changing on that? I think we'd already done that.
Yeah, do it every year.
So, so it's an annual requirement?
Yeah, then sometimes they might add something.
Okay, okay.
Should get us a copy of that and sign.
So we need to, this is an action item, right?
Yes.
So there hasn't been adoption, someone would make a motion.
So we're approving these government standards, right?
Right, we'll sign it. Right. Right.
You have a lot of choice, really.
We don't really have a choice, okay.
Right.
Well, they do have it.
Well, well, we can sign or not sign. Anyway, I, I move that we, we approve professional government standards presented by the M D E. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Dr. Bunce, second by Dr. Robinson, all in favor? All right, pass is five zero, so we'll clear that out today. But you got to have it in by. Okay, eight point four.
Mr. James, members of the board, eight point four is approval of COVID nineteen forgiveness policy. Uh, this policy would be effective from June one, twenty twenty-two, which would give uh up to five days of paid leave for specified reasons for employees of Natchez Adams School District. Those reasons are outlined as one, the employee was required to quarantine because he or she was exposed uh to COVID, uh or it was in a setting that had been quarantined on the Natchez Adams School District site, one of the campuses. Or, uh, the employee was required to stay home with a child who was exposed or who tested positive for COVID. So this would give those uh staff members an additional five days of paid leave.
Let me, let me add please, if you remember, we came, we talked to you in October, November, and referenced it this. And it was our intent to make sure we, we uh, a- after this policy, we approve on the back end rather than the front end, because the last time when we approved on the front, we had so much abuse. So now the way this will work here is that if Fred Butcher was out five days, I got a positive test myself, or a positive test for my wife or child. If I call Ms. Bryce and send my positive test in, then we'll automatically put five days back onto my, you know, onto my time off. Now, there's no monetary uh forgiveness at all in this. It's just replacing the day of the, the days of the five that you might have missed. And uh we really thought that this was fair because, as you know, during that particular time, we had to close down some classes and those kinds of things, so it was unfair for the employees would have to use their time if we had to close down a class and those kind of things. So we just don't, it'll be a five day forgiveness, no monetary forgiveness at all.
Can I get a motion?
I'll move, I'll move that we accept the forgiveness policy as presented by Mr. Butcher.
Can I get a second? Okay, this motion by Dr. Bunce, second by Ms. Webb, discussion on that policy? No, I don't have somebody. Do you have any discussion? Nobody? Everybody good? Okay, all in favor? All right, pass is five zero. Okay, eight point five.
Mr. James, members of the board, you have before you the proposed academic calendar for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three uh school year. For the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, the Natchez Adams School District positive a flexible calendar during the second semester, which we're uh in now. The Natchez Adams School District is looking to fully implement a flexible calendar for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. This flexible calendar, not to be confused with the year-round calendar, will provide teachers and students with uh meaningful breaks along with two intercession periods for innovative learning opportunities. Uh the benefit of this concept would be increasing student attendance, decreasing the amount of reteaching required at the uh start of school due to summer learning loss remediation, accelerated and enhanced learning opportunities during the school year, and reducing student and teacher burnout. Uh, a survey with a proposed calendar was sent out to parents, students, employees, and community members for feedback. And uh based on the feedback that was given, a revised calendar was constructed. Uh, the proposed calendar still offers the required one hundred and eighty days of instruction. So if you look in your packet, I provided you with the draft that was sent out uh for feedback. And we got a lot of feedback. Uh, so, uh, from that, from that feedback, we constructed uh the calendar that we're proposing uh for you today. And again, uh, I guess there are two intercession periods, um, and pretty breaks uh each month, with the exception of the month of August.
On, on this subject, Tony and, and, and I'll bring you in. How are the intercessions going?
Our attendance has been good. Um, there, of course, were some kinks that we had to work out for the first session. That uh was, were much improved for the second session. Um, good participation from our students. Um, we saw some growth in some packets, and of course, we saw some areas that we have to continue to work in. But they have, uh, overall being, they are beneficial for our students.
Okay, we see really academic improvement.
Yes.
Good job.
Yes.
So, first, the, uh
Uh, for students, it will be
Twenty eighth?
Yeah, July the twenty eighth. Um, and the start of school this year was August the second, so we're only talking, you know, a couple of days early from the start this year.
Do you have a percentage of increase as far as academic success?
I don't have those numbers with me. Uh, we are preparing uh academic uh update for the board, you get all that information there.
We did, we met with principals today, for the first five or six hours, I think we got one, two schools, two schools left.
And are the teachers receiving this? I mean, enjoying doing and working in intercession?
The ones who have, who have participated, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. We are using our S R money and those funds to fund those intercessions, correct?
I don't want that.
Well, with that, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to make the motion that we approve the academic calendar and schedule.
Now, sir.
Okay, motion was made by Dr. Bunce, second by Mr. West, um, all in favor?
Thank you, and Mr. Butler made sure that I obeyed every code and died in the gas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Okay, eight point six. That was the booth counselor. I think we need to discuss this, we need to discuss this, so let's take this, please.
Okay.
So, can I give a motion to the table?
I move that, uh, eight point six, approval of both of the booth professional counselors, they're listed, are tabled.
Now, sir, let me tell you. Motion was made by Dr. Robinson to table the booth professional counselor. And second by Mr. West, all in favor?
All right.
All in favor? Pass is five zero. Eight point seven, you see it there? All right, then we're in item nine, members of the board, it's nine point one, Mr. Berry.
All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, of the board. Seven ten, Mr. Butler, deputy superintendent, Mr. Donald Green. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, awesome, I know I have some audio difficulties in past. Um, including the board packet is the February financial report for your review. I want to follow and see if there were any questions that have arisen on the review.
Okay. Is there not any questions about the financial statement? Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. West. Okay, nine point two, Ms. Ma.
Nine point two, Mr. James, members of the board, is our monthly review of policies. This month, we will be reviewing policy, uh section G, which deals with personnel. There are no requested revisions. That review will exclude policy G B A E dash E, which was approved by the board at a earlier time. So we are reviewing section G personnel with no requested revisions. Uh, Ms. Webb will make certain you get your policy available.
That was really my voice. Thank you.
Uh, next we have technology update.
Good afternoon. Before you have the monthly technology report, do y'all have any questions on it?
All right, is there not any question? Thank you, Mr. Tennessee.
Thank you.
Okay, federal programs update?
Good afternoon, presenting in your board packet are the senior S R reports. Are there any questions?
Now, this is this. S R two, right?
We still have not been able to uh see, we have not received approval for S R three at this point. I think, uh, Ms. Thomas made one or two adjustments, uh, on Friday, wasn't it, Ms. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, it, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, then now we have board calendar. Uh, Ms. Davis, uh, if there's anything that a board member would like to put on the calendar, like something taken off or what have you, give Ms. Davis, and she will, we'll do our board calendar, going outboard, too.
Yeah.
You got June, do it in June, yeah, for three days, two of the year.
What, do you treat it when?
I think in June, for two or three days, we do it.
Okay.
No year to go, somebody do it. Um, superintendent update.
Okay, Mr. James, a member of the board on the superintendent's update. First of all, uh, I would like Ms. Moore to make a presentation because we informed you at the last board meeting that we did receive a two point two or two point three million dollar grant. But we did, we were on our line, the day was, we got the bad weather with M D E for about an hour and a half. So we want to do is bring to you how we want to spend this money, try to do any revision. So if there's something that you, you know, you're not happy with, we can take it back to the table. So it would have to be sending up to Jackson, then, you know, send another email three days later, we changed our mind about this. So Ms. Moore could give us a breakdown of that part of the meeting.
Okay, you should have a, a breakdown included in your package. Your board, was it in there, Mr.? Was, did they have that? It was in the F Y I D E minutes. Okay, okay. Uh, what, uh, as Mr. Butcher stated, during our special power board meeting on March twenty-second, I inform you all that we were awarded a two million dollar grant from M D E uh for highly qualified instructional materials. On March twenty-second, we met with M D E, with the M D E team to make certain of the things that we could purchase or what, how we can use the fund. And it was at that time, they did tell us that we can use it for personnel. Uh, as long as we get our highly qualified math curriculum, which is what we wanted, uh, we can use the rest for personnel. So what we wanted to do is, uh, we want to, of course, purchase the curriculum. We want to, uh, for personnel, we want to hire a certified A C T uh person, someone who can have a narrow focus on A C T, because you know that is one of our biggest priorities right now. And with going through the pandemic, we're seeing a lot of deficient areas, and we really do need uh staff in to help us to increase the academics for that. So we want to hire certified A C T coordinators for seventh through twelfth grade. We want to hire a, uh, we want to look at two elementary math coaches, because currently, right now, we only have a pre-K second grade E L A coach. So we have no one just working uh every day or daily with our third through fifth grade testing areas in E L A.
And Ms. Moore, if you can make down, uh, relate to the board from our discussions so far today, that, that about that we carry in, ma'am, please.
Yes.
Uh, across the board, as you always, you were, uh, uh, looked at any of the state assessment data across the state of Mississippi during last year, during the height of the pandemic, math really took a hit in our district, we are still seeing that uh challenged area, uh especially at the middle school level. Uh, and on the elementary level in some areas. And so we've had some discussions today, one, teachers need that support. Two, we got to build capacity with some of the standards. Understanding exactly what those standards are, are do, uh, asking our children to know and be able to do. Uh, and also, we have to make certain that there are some curriculum adjustments that we're going to have to make in order to uh target what we're seeing with our students. So, uh, one area that we're seeing, uh, is multiplication fluency. And so, we understand that they're introduced to multiplication in second grade, second semester. However, it starts showing up on the assessment third grade forward. And so we're going to have to make some adjustments to make certain that we build in uh an assessment, a metric for our students for multiplication uh fluency, because it impacts students as they continue to matriculate. And so, there are just some areas that we're going to have to target in order to increase uh that, the student performance in mathematics, because right now, we are seeing uh the results of what the pandemic did for us in that area.
When are we teaching geometry?
Geometry is introduced, I write, I think, third or fourth grade, some concepts of it.
Uh, previously, we had discussed, uh, hiring teachers in math and science.
Yes, ma'am.
And paying them a little more.
Yes, ma'am.
So what, what she mentioned was coaching. So you just want to get the coaching.
Okay.
And then also, just to, to carry on, we're also looking at interventions, which is coming back to the teacher part of it. Uh, we know that there is a really drastic need for interventionists in our middle school and our high school. We are, you know, we normally focus and put those type of, of positions at the elementary. But, you know, with the pandemic now, we, we, we desperately need it at those levels as well. So we have four of those listed in, in the, uh, proposal. Also, another thing, uh, we want to do is to call a performance-based pay. And what we want to look at is paying, uh, tested areas, E L A and math, teachers, uh, ten thousand dollars based on certain criteria that we're going to put in place. So we, we base that off about the teachers we have in place now, and then teachers we will be hiring to, you know, to entice our teachers, more teachers to come in and work for. for.
And we're working with, uh, a colleague who, who is a former, uh, employee of the Mississippi Department of Education, who is working with pilot programs and worked, uh, uh, implementing a seminar, uh, program into, uh, some charter schools outside of the state of Mississippi, because we want to make certain that, uh, the guidelines that we have are, um, are, are, uh, specific, and also that the metrics that we use to determine who will receive the performance-based pay are, are there from the beginning. Also, we're going to have to ensure that they're trained, because teachers need to understand what is going to be expected of them, uh, and also the support piece of how we want to make certain that we're improving our student outcomes, um, something else I was thinking, but it didn't sit up in my mind.
But they're, they're not going to be based strictly on this, on the, on the testing scores, are they? Are they?
What we're going to.
We're going to have a, a metric.
Multiple.
What we're looking at is student learning objectives. Uh, we're looking at teacher performance. Uh, uh, one of the goals of the board is to make certain that we are increasing the effectiveness of our teachers based upon the professional, professional growth system rule, so that will be one of the metrics. Uh, there will be an assessment piece in there, but it will not be the entirety of what, of what we will be focusing on.
And it will be multiple tests.
Just look at one assessment piece, I thought we talked about looking at two.
Right, it will be multiple tests, it will not just be state tests. It will be district, it will be our district con, uh, benchmark assessments as well.
And what the conversation has been with our colleague is, you know, what he's seen in his work with the State Department is that when you compare your local performance with national norms, not just state norms, that you see the greatest impact to student outcomes. And so that's what he's working with us on, of how to use the assessments that we have to, uh, to compare student growth to national.
And, and, and when you say national, are you talking about A C T?
Uh, not, we haven't gotten that far in the conversation, but we're going to look at how can we.
Because, you know, A C T has all that data.
Yes.
And that data, that's the data that is going to count, which is why I point out geometry.
Absolutely.
You know, if a child doesn't have geometry, they're going to, they're not going to do well on the math G R A, if they don't have those concepts.
Hold that point for later on, we'll go into that.
Are we saying that, uh, this is going to be objective as opposed to subjective?
It will be very objective. The outlines will be specified from the beginning, of course, uh, so it will not be because I like you or don't like you, is what, these are the metrics that we will use. So we're saying student learning objectives. As a teacher, you'll take your, your data, your student data, when students come into your class at the beginning of the year, based upon that data, using support from our coaches and the curriculum team, as a teacher, you will decide, based upon the data I'm looking at, that fifty percent of our students should be able to meet these, uh, performance targets by December. Uh, twenty-five an additional ten percent should be able to, uh, meet the target come April, at the end of the year, we'll have. So that's not us saying this is what you have to do, this is a teacher making an informed decision based upon the data, the students that she has in her, in her classroom, and along the way, we will measure that growth.
And that would help you also, Mr. West, because sometimes, you know, TJ said, you know, when TJ got all the better students, I got the slower.
Exactly.
But when you look at, what, what you assess your students at the beginning of the year, did you assess the goal for those, because you know what to do, I mean?
Yeah.
And also, we talked about with the teacher evaluation, uh, you know, sometimes we can, uh, say, you know, one principal is more critical than the other, we're working very hard to calibrate, uh, uh, teacher evaluation, so we're all looking for the same thing, we all understand what quality teaching is, we're looking for that. We're also talking about if a, a teacher lets to participate in a performance-based program, it's, it will be, uh, voluntary, it's not, no one will be mandated to. If you're going to participate, we talked about having an independent evaluator come in to calibrate. So if your principal comes in and scores you at one level, then we have an independent evaluator, who comes in, who scores, then we'll create an average of it. And so again, that's just another set of eyes to make sure that we're being objective.
Do you anticipate whether or not this two point million dollars, a bit over two million dollars that we're receiving now, will be something that we would be, uh, that would exist in the long term?
This is a, if I'm not mistaken, a two-year, uh.
It's two years.
So those persons that we're going to give those increases in salary to or whatever, whatever, uh, we, they, they're going to lose that after two years?
Mr. West, one question that this Morse have, I think, was sustainability, am I right?
Yes, sustainability.
We talked about sustainability already, so once we get back with M D E, then we will be able to answer that question, I wanted to tell you a lie.
That is something, that is something that, uh, Dr. Smith, who's with M D E, that's something she's researching out for us, so she's going to get back with us on that.
But we asked her that question.
Well, we need to ask.
We asked her about three courses she had to research.
Okay.
But also, we haven't worked out the pay card yet, because, you know, just in my little small mind, if we assess, we've got a local assessment going on three times a year, then as a result, uh, after my first benchmark, then I'll divide that, uh, ten thousand dollars up, and you'll give an additional check for this amount of money. After the semester benchmark, hope we can do that before Christmas, and if you, you meet all the targets, then you'll get that, that amount of money, you know what I'm saying? So you, it won't be a thing, we're going to put it into the check, it'll be something you can see, you, when you give people a thousand dollars versus sixty-five dollars a month, they can do something with a thousand dollars, not that they can't do with sixty-five, still, I'm saying.
And the, uh, last part of our proposal is, uh, we are including money for discourages for our students. We want to get field trips for our students. Uh, we want to, we want to get our students back out there and get them exposed. Uh, we know that STEM and things of that nature is very big and very prevalent right now, so we want to get them out there and put them in the, the, on the field trips so they can go and get their hands on and just expose them to things that are correlated and aligned to what we are teaching, but just give them that exposure. So we also included that in the proposal.
We also feel like with an excursion built in, if friend Butcher goes to, uh, the summer session for, let's say, six weeks, if every Friday, we got somewhere for him to go, at least every other Friday, we have somewhere for him to go, I mean, like on a charter bus, not to Jackson or Monroe, but go somewhere whereby we can, they'll be connect what we're doing in the classroom along with our occupation, so they can see things, because, you know, we live in a generation right now, they have to see it, you know, you can't look down the road and think they're going to imagine it, they got to see it, got to be tangible for them.
Did you say charter bus?
Yes. They ride school buses all the time.
Huh?
They drive school buses every day.
Well, I understand, I was just trying to make sure I can hear right sometimes, or somebody, or whatever.
Are you thinking they're going to spend the night, those kinds of excursions?
We have a little committee working on it, we haven't decided that, but that, that could be a possibility, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, if, if it's at all affordable and we, and it's not too much of, you know, liability with parents, I think that's always exciting for students to go somewhere that they're actually staying in a hotel, right, you know?
Right.
Having those sorts of experiences.
But when we roll this, when we roll this out, we have all those pieces put together at different time points.
So you're going to be selective of the students who would be going on these excursions, or whatever the case may be, the ones that you.
We're not going to be so much selective, but the ones who come to the classes.
That's our problem.
Right.
Starting this summer, with, and, and what we're looking at is like summer camps, we're having a, uh, looking at a STEM summer camp, we may have a math camp, uh, and those students who participate in those camps, we want to, you know, expose them, want to take them on field trips, like Mr. Jusia. So, and, and hopes of, one of, I mean, one of the, uh, reason for participating is not only academics, but if you want to go on this field trip, you have to be there. It cannot be you come today and you don't come tomorrow. No, you have to be there, because we only have four days during the summer. So, uh, hopefully that will help, uh, encourage our parents to let the students come and participate.
Now, I was just going to say, uh, in reference to what I just mentioned, probably the bulk of these students would be come out of the at-risk cat, category, is that correct?
Yes.
That's, okay, I just wondered, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, we, no. We're going to have it open for all categories.
I know, but.
You know, but, yes, sir.
Well, what, I just wanted to say that, that it's such an underused, uh, you know, up, the Corps of Engineers, and they have lot, I mean, I know that some of their all horn students, um, correct me if I'm wrong along, because, um, our students have gone and done editing, and there's engineers, and they're always eager to show students, and I think they've got some exhibits that explain the river. But it's engineering, STEM-type people up there that I think are always happy, and they're right at the index mark. So put that on your list as something to think about.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Okay, keep your questions.
All right, well, we will let you know when we submit the, uh, proposal, uh, and once M D E approve it, we'll let you know, we'll do a data.
Let me ask you, I don't know how big the proposal is going to be, but is it possible for us to get a copy of it after you submitted it?
Sure, sure.
Okay, I mean, each board member.
Sure.
We want to look at what, what we propose.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Okay. Good day, young.
Yes, sir. I did send out a copy of, uh, superintendent's update, like any course, or anything on that, on that material.
Can I do a five?
Yes, any course. Okay, also, I'm about to pass it out to you, uh, once you look over it and get back with us at some point, I'm sorry, I don't have it on the computer, but this is, uh, a transition, some of those things that we will need to deal with in transitioning, uh, to different rate levels or whatever the case is there, so, uh, we might have missed something, so if it's something you think we need to add on, then let us know, or send it to Ms. Davis, she will let us know, uh, because of the fact, it's, it's going to be, you know, there's a lot to do with the big job, so we're going to make sure we have everything on paper, so everybody can be assigned what they're supposed to do, so we don't have any glitches further down the road there.
Okay. Let me all look over there. Look, now we'd like to have a, uh, I know we've been a lot through the summer, so, wow, board, if you don't want to say? Update on this grant that we have, how it's doing, how it's being distributed?
I had it for you tonight, please, sir.
With the football, uh, from the Saints.
Right, I have all that in the, now, we did put in a package whereby it's the, the, those items that the, that the money can be put, be spent for, for the, uh, for the New Orleans Saints brand. Okay, but we'll, we'll bring you an update, I talked to Ms. Campbell twice this week, because there are one or two things that you'd like to make the decision on, one of the brands. Probably the coffee.
Is this relating, this transition, is this information related to what?
They're actually related, the things of the items that we'll need to do in order to move from one spot to the next spot, uh, when that comes on.
You mean the changing of the schools and all that kind of stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
And we think everything's going to be complete October, because I've been asked. October. I, I, okay.
Don't make me tell you that one.
Okay, well, it's written down right here, October twenty twenty-two, is that all right?
That's a projection.
A projection, but I, I will, how I will say it.
Uh, we're trying very hard with this system of keys to push that, you know, back up to, oh, your time is going to fail, but, uh, right here.
We're trying.
Well, I've been asked, you know, what the county didn't do that.
And the law is, when you start to pack in and pack and pack, are the personnel going to pack, or you bringing in somebody?
Can I, can I just go take, take a second, please?
Okay.
This is, okay, yeah, we need to have a bit more time on this.
Well, you have all the time on that, I just gave you that for you to look at, okay, you have time to go back.
Okay. All right, and you can finish. Any board member, board member comments? Any board member, is that Dr. Robinson?
I just want to tell everybody thank you for the work you've done and your dedication to the district, and please stay safe.
Dr. Spence? Would I, Mr. West?
Okay, you skipped me, that's all right.
No.
I had a couple of things I wanted to get, and I know this, uh, we can act on this request for from the N double A C P, they, as long as it meets, uh, our normal policy of how we rent or lease or allow our property to be used.
Facility use.
Facility use, right. And I told them that, but they asked me, this is, they're scheduling a June team, on June eighteenth, uh, and I told them we would just, uh, I'm quite sure the board has no problem with proving it, as long as it meets, uh, facility requirements and that kind of thing. So I'd like to offer a motion that, so they can go there with their plans or whatever, and get the necessary information into the board to do that.
Question, is there a fee?
It's not, uh, well.
No. We really don't charge a fee. We have to, we may require certain things like insurance or something like that.
What about cleanup?
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, this is for the outside, this is not for the building, but still cleanup would be important, right? But they would be required to do those kinds of things.
There's a four that we have.
Right.
Different length every time, yeah.
And I told them that there's a flat, there's a, or whatever, they said, we're going to do it anyway, and then we'll get that in, we'll, we'll get that in.
They got the ambition.
Right. So most of them, as long as they can meet that standard.
Do you want to cover that?
Point?
Which facility?
Magalhun. The outside.
Okay.
I made a motion.
Secondly, for them.
Mr. West made the motion to allow N double A C P to use the, for June team, use Magalhun.
Right, for June and team.
Sent by Dr. Robinson, in the discussion. All in favor? A hundred and fifty.
I have another, the other thing, remember, we had a request, uh, from, from Mr. Harris and the former mayor regarding consider, consideration of tennis courts on, on additional property that we have, and so I think we need to go on and, not necessarily tennis courts, that can be a part of the study, we need to authorize that the superintendent would get with an architect and an engineer, whatever, that into a consultant or whatever, to find out what is feasible to go on this particular, uh, unused piece of property that we have. In other words, we have like twelve or thirteen or fourteen more acres that we have, that's the school, it's not used now, the school won't wait a few last, and then maybe some of those we want to keep for whatever. But in order for us to make a good, sound decision on this, we need to have somebody to do a study to see what can go back there, whether it's eight tennis courts, whether it's baseball fields, whether it's parks, or whatever, you know, benches, or, I don't know, uh, but we don't know either. And so I was going to ask, how does everybody feel about moving forward, trying?
Mr. West, respectfully, you know, we have a lot of our play right now. So if you can, if that, if that's the wish of the board, I wish they would let that be something we can bring back in June, because to do a feasibility study, first of all, it's going to take some time, and you have to make sure that you organize it in such a way that you get the questions answered there to, uh, that that's going to be effective, because right now, you know, we got two billion projects going on, we're trying to get this two and a half thousand million dollars grant back into Jackson, it's just a whole lot for us to do right now.
Well, I understand, I'm not talking about using the people we have, I'm talking about using somebody else, authorizing that some other, uh, case your firm, huh?
Some, some other agency?
Some other what?
Some other agency.
You're right, I'm saying, I know we've got information from, what's the guy's name, who's our insurance agent, uh, used to be over Recreation, what's his name?
Hamby.
Hamby, okay, Hamby already has plans, okay, that they did some years ago. Now, it may not relate to this particular, I just don't know, but I just think that we're not asking you, I'm not asking you to do anything beyond facilitate the hiring of somebody to see what kind of costs would be involved, and to, uh, as relates to doing a feasibility study on this property, because the property is just sitting there, okay, we've got our S R funds that are going to run out, well, we don't know when it's going to run out, but they say in twenty twenty-four, we, we trying to have the school developed, built, uh, private for, before the years out, hopefully they'll take place. But in the meantime, this property is sitting there, where we haven't done a proposed to do anything with it ourselves, and I'm saying, right now is the better time to have somebody else looking at it, as we've authorized the VA group to do the, uh, study on, on the, 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 the air conditioning or whatever. And so I'm just trying to say, uh, you know, I think, I think we're already behind, to be quite honest. So if you're saying that you, you're too overwhelmed to, to hire somebody, uh, to recommend to the board that we hire an architect or whatever to do this, is that what you're saying, Mr. Butcher, because I'm, I'm like, said, I'm not.
I didn't know, I didn't, I, I am sorry, Mr. screwed, I know you wanted to hire somebody.
Yes.
You know, that's just hiring somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. King, that's going to be a matter of putting an R and P together and telling them what you want in R and P and letting them come in, is that right? Or is that what?
It's professional services, you don't, you can do that, or you cannot, you don't have to, is that correct?
Yes, uh, an architect could be consulted and given, uh, instructions to, to develop an R and P, uh, without having to go through a bit of process, but of course, the construction... But of course, the construction, uh, work would have to be bid out soon.
Right, I know. I'm talking, I'm talking, I'm talking about to find out what we need to consider is what, is, is what I'm raising. You know, should it be tennis courts? Okay, we've got, we've got a new school being built with two gymnasiums. We've got a softball, uh, I mean, a baseball field, we've got a swimming pool, we've got soccer fields. All of these things are right in this area, okay? So I, so why should we allow a situation where we've got twelve or thirteen or fourteen acres left and not make sure it's conducive to helping not only the kids in the school district, but also the community at large? So I'm trying to say, let's hire somebody to figure it out, because I don't have that expertise. And I don't think anybody at this table has.
Sunny, I, I need to check this one again, uh, softball courts.
What, what?
I'm sorry, tennis courts, uh, possibly baseball field or softball field, whatever the case is. We need a band practice field open behind high school, sure.
Correct. And I'm saying that, and I'm saying, we need to have somebody that's working to do that. It could, they could be categorized as a consultant, they could be categorized as an architectural consultant, or whatever. Or somebody who really knows sports, okay? And will be able to make a decision as to what makes, what feeds what here or not, and that kind, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
That, so they can, it's gonna take, take them a while to work, you know what I'm saying? So I was just asking that if the board had no objection to it, that we would direct you to look into that, uh, even though we're not asking you to spend on, you know, as, uh, a whole lot of time with it, with how the people to do the work.
Well, that's just that we get our athletic director involved.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, you're right, that would be the purpose of a consultant to, what? You talking about in terms of planning for the-
I need to bring in a consultant. You wanna get, you wanna get recreational involved with these AD.
Okay, okay. Now, okay, I understand that, and, and I'm thinking that this consultant, whomever to do this, talking to the athletic director, to, you know, you and Mr. Butcher, whomever, about what that, different ideas are. There's only so much you could do with, say, twelve or thirteen open acres of land. We may wanna save a couple of acres, uh, on the backside, and even, you know, twenty, thirty years from now, we have a larger population and the state may, may need to expand. At the same time, uh, I mentioned those areas that, uh, that are being addressed, that's already out there, swimming pools and so forth and so on. And it's my understanding that they're considering higher the usage of the, improving the baseball field, okay? Uh, so you got all of that out right there. And the other thing that's not out there, I don't know what it should be, but I do know we had a request from the former mayor that, you know, we look at putting some tennis courts up there. Right. And so, and, and maybe we don't have need tennis courts there, but it takes somebody of-
But what you're asking for is a master plan. I agree, an athletic director should be the person to do that.
Well, we can get, give us somebody, and then go with it, some of it might not be able to use the land, you know, we never know, some of it might be bad, or whatever.
Some of the land.
Yeah.
Right, and I'm saying, we need to find that out.
So we get somebody.
So-
Do we bring it to you for the maybe?
Yeah, I mean, you could just tell us where you are, what you're, what you're gonna recommend that we do in order to move forward.
Think the RFP would have to be out there for at least fourteen, fifteen minutes.
That'll work. We, we, what we do, we'll give it.
Wait a minute, are you saying, Bruce, are you saying we need an RFP in order for us to investigate the fees, uh, uh, enforce someone?
No, no, he didn't say that.
Okay. Because I'm thinking, we don't need an RFP. We're not looking for an RFP, we're looking for somebody who can answer the question, including, uh, in communications with the athletic director, whomever, and other people to see, including going to Tate Hobbit and saying, what do you have here? Or whatever, and to then try to see, yeah, thirteen acres of land, we could put eight tennis courts here, or we could put eight tennis courts and two baseball fields, or we could put eight tennis, no tennis courts, and this and that, that's what I'm talking about.
Well, you got it now.
Okay.
All right.
So that's not, uh, not a requirement, that, that you have to have an RFP for that.
Dr. Barnes? No, you finished, you ain't finished.
No, I haven't.
Go ahead.
I wasn't.
Go ahead.
No, I, I wanted to make a suggestion just for, for thought, that we would consider, uh, uh, looking into a policy. Uh, not today, but looking into a policy that would encourage people who work in our school district to establish residency in Natchez and Adams County. Now, let me, let me clarify that. It could be, I'm not saying everybody, or that kind of thing. I'm saying, we have lost population over the past forty years, and I know a lot of things that contribute to that. We also have a lot of times when people come in and work for a year or two, and then they leave. Then we have people who come in and stay a longer period of time, and they end up with roots here, uh, commitments to whatever, whatever. And so I'm trying to think, I'm thinking that we need to establish a policy that encourages and or mandates, and that's where Bruce would come in, uh, that certain people would ha- would remain in Natchez, uh, establishing residence, uh, in Natchez. Uh, and when I say Natchez, I'm talking about Adams County, uh, Adams County. Y'all understand what I'm, what I'm saying? I mean, you, you don't have to agree. I'm trying to figure out.
Go it on here.
Huh?
Go it on.
Right.
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, we've, we've always basically tried to emphasize that we wanna make sure that, uh, that we can hire people who are either from the area, or who are committed to the area once they come, as opposed to having five or six different, uh, coaches, or five or six different superintendents every other year, okay? And so I don't know if, if, that, that can be such a policy, how it would be, what did I do, remember, many, many years ago, the city government used to require a data policy, and they changed it some years later. They used to have a policy that required anybody who worked for the city had to live in the city. I don't know, LaWong, you probably don't remember that, because you were young. But that happened, okay? And they had that for, for that particular reason. So I'm not saying we need, need to have it, that kind of requirement. I'm wondering if we need to come up with a policy that encourages people to, uh, to establish residence in our community, to stay here longer, or whatever the case may be. I'm just throwing something out, okay? Uh-
Let me, let me, there's, uh, what is it? Can we, uh, we're doing our board with you?
Yeah, we can. I was just, you know, I mean, if nobody wants to comment on it now, I'm just throwing it out for, so you can think about it. Because you may have a better approach than what I'm suggesting. I'm just suggesting we think about it. Uh, and, 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 and come up with, uh, if we think it's worthy of our attention, then we'll move forward with it. We're trying to come up with something that will be amenable and legal and so forth, and not adversely impact our community. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Barnes, do you have anything?
It's a little anticlimactic, but I, no, I want to, um, just say what an honor it was to work with Dylan Dusson. During the time I've been here.
Yes.
Um, I'm sure I speak for the whole board. She was an inspiration, and her work ethic was incredible. I appreciate her work so much. And I also wanna say how happy I am to have Alona Weir with us. She and I've worked together at all points, and I'm just glad that she's agreed to join us on the board. So welcome, Alona, thank you.
I, I do have a concern, and I know this is my first day, um, but yesterday, can you give us a status or an update about the child on yesterday, how does this, is it?
Must it?
In taking a session.
Anything regarding, please, of that nature.
Of their nature.
Okay.
How do we handle social media? Is that existing this way? Is there a policy, uh, that's with employees?
There is a social media policy, uh, for employees that's a pipeline that you have to walk with the attorney. So, yes, we'll, we'll get your copy that time.
So we can discuss this with you, if you can.
I'll be there.
We have, cause I just really need to discuss it.
Okay, I don't have anything, so we're gonna get ready to, get ready for, we want to just close the termination. Okay? Can I get them on the board?
I know, I know that we're going to close the termination.
Moved by Dr. Barnes, seconded by Dr. Robinson, that we go into closed termination, to receive every reason for this decision. All in favor? And we're going into closed determination. Thank you.